So are we hitting, are we on time?
We are.
We're hitting five o'clock. So we have closed, you mean, so. I'm gonna call the meeting to order. Do we have, do they ever get a chance to look at the agenda and know what we're doing? Do we have a motion to approve the agenda? Like tonight?
So I'll move.
Second. Second. Okay. All of those in favor?
Hi.
All right. Members of the public. Do we have anyone here for public discussion? Members of the public. Hi. Did you sign in?
Oh, no.
Or would you like to speak?
Um, no, I'm a SLAS student. I'm just
Oh.
To watch this.
You're here. We're very entertaining.
I'm also a stopper, but I'm here.
Okay. Okay. Um, so then the next item on our agenda is the city manager's presentation. So it is all yours.
Great. Uh, the mouse here unable to drive the
Are we already downloaded or we go? It's in the car. Fantastic. Without those slides.
And then I just see a long limited song. Well, thank you for the opportunity. My name is Jeff Frohman. For those of you that haven't met, I'm the city manager for the city of Iowa City. And was asked to come here and talk about the local option sales tax that is going to be on the November 4th ballot this year. So I want to just kind of tell you a little bit about what local option sales tax is, uh, what the city council discussions have been to date, how the funds would be used if the voters approve it. We'll go through all those things. And I know you have a very large board packet in front of you. So I'm gonna move quickly through a lot of these slides, but please don't wait until the end. Just jump in if you've got questions or if you want me to clarify anything here. Okay, so where is this starting from? Um, I want to make sure that everybody knows that this isn't something that just came up out of, uh, out of blue here. It's actually been part of our strategic plan discussions for several years. Um, our strategic plan was started in fiscal year 23, uh, included an action step to consider alternative revenue sources such as the local option sales tax to help us achieve some of our critical, uh, goals in that plan. So really at that time, the council recognized that we're having a hard time as it is just funding the operations. And if we want to do a lot of the extra things that, um, are contained in this plan, we're gonna need some funding resources to, to assist with that. As we moved past that strategic plan, then we started facing some additional headwinds, uh, largely due to state property tax reform. So this, this idea of another revenue source not only becomes critical for, uh, achieving those value add, um, items that the council wanted to, but also just making sure that we can maintain our core services such as providing library service to the community. On top of the state property tax reform that has already been passed and continues to be discussed in Des Moines, uh, we've had some, uh, what we call here tepid, uh, property tax valuation growth. Some of that is related to, uh, uh, property tax reform, but it's also just recognizing that the economy is in a different place than it was in that 2014 to 2019 period in which the city was growing quite a bit. And we've all experienced the inflationary pressures. We experienced that at our home and our business, library board members. I'm sure you see that in some of the staff reports and, uh, the budget sharing items that become, uh, come for you. But it's just more expensive to do the same thing, uh, today as, as it was, uh, last year. So local option sales tax is a 1% uh, sales tax on top of the 6% sales tax that the state offers or the state charges. So statewide, there is a 6% uh, sales tax. All those dollars, uh, go to the state. And local jurisdictions with the approval of the voters can add 1%. Uh, cannot go any, uh, above one, but we can add one. And, uh, most of the charges that we encounter in the day will be subject to that tax. So it'd be a total 7%. However, recognizing the regressivity of, of sales tax, there are many items that are exempt. Uh, so really, um, that's a, that's a statewide decision on what is exempt, what is not. Which you can see over the years, but the state has exempted a number of, uh, basic needs. Your groceries, your healthcare items, your utilities, your gasoline, your rent. All those things are exempt from, uh, sales tax. So, uh, the, the regressivity of the local sales talk, uh, sales tax still exists, but it's minimized with these exemptions. In the state of Iowa, about 93% of jurisdictions have the loss. We are, we are in the minority in terms of communities that not have a lost. We'll get into that a little bit more. This just shows you retail sales, uh, in Iowa City, uh, all the way from 2000 on far left down to 2024. You can see a major drop in that great recession period that 2008, 2009 period. And then really seemingly, you know, never recovered, uh, fully, uh, from that. And it's been pretty stagnant, uh, from that time. This is important, not really because of the amount. Uh, we do, uh, estimate conservatively eight to 10 million brought in by the 1%. But it's important to, to see that there's not year-over-year growth. So when you're thinking about matching revenue with expenditures, you really don't want to fund something that may be growing at a four or five or six percent, um, uh, uh, rate year-over-year on the expense side and your revenues are, are pretty stagnant. So, uh, we, we don't expect the sales tax year-to-year to change, uh, quite a bit. Um, outside of the ebbs and flows that tend to come with the, uh, economic conditions. Um, one point that, uh, we do want to bring out, obviously here with the home of the University of Iowa, we have a lot of visitors and, uh, we have an estimated 5.1 visitors in 2024 with over $450 million in spending. So this is one way for those visitors who use our services to contribute to, uh, the expenses to, uh, running the community.
And the actual
Yes.
With their spending of the, then with, um, the retail sales or is that in the hotel?
That includes everything. So some of this, some of this would be exempt.
Won't be a heavily, right?
Right.
A significant amount of that 458 is exempt from this.
I would, I don't know that I'd say a significant amount, but, um, uh, a, a significant, well, a a large portion is probably hotel stays.
Yeah.
And we do get hotel motel tax. But, um, there's gonna be a lot of expenses that, that would be, uh, included in the plan. Uh, local option sales tax is not new to Iowa City. Uh, we, uh, collected sales tax for four years, um, 2010 to 2013. This was a local option sales tax that was done specifically for flood relief efforts after the 2008 flood. You see during that time period, we collected $34 million for flood mitigation projects. Uh, for those who have been in Iowa City for a while, you can recall the, the raising of, of, uh, the Buke Street, our gateway project, which also included a new park or a bridge. And also the move, uh, from our, uh, this seems to be our north wastewater plant here. This is kind of behind Big Grove. We see that coming over here now beautiful river from across this park, but prior to that was a sewer plant. And, uh, local option sales tax were, were, uh, integral into, uh, expanding our south plant, which is pictured up here, um, uh, to enable its park development. So, um, what this shows is that, uh, in four short years, this, this revenue stream can have a significant impact on it. Uh, it is, it is certainly a very powerful, uh, revenue source, uh, that can help the city achieve a number of goals. Uh, we did try to renew that in 2014 and it failed. Now, there was a different, the law has changed since this time. Back in 2014, uh, you had to vote as a contiguous city block. So in that case, Coroville, North Liberty and Iowa City had to vote together and it was all in or all out. Um, Iowa City voters did approve it by more than 50%, but the Coroville and North Liberty voters did not. And in total, it did not pass. Um, the law has changed now to where individual cities can pass this without having to vote as a block amongst their Uh, there has been no attempt since 2014 to put this back on. Uh, lots of numbers here, um, and you can have access certainly to this, this presentation, but this just shows other metro cities in the state of Iowa, uh, that have lost. Uh, there are only two cities of more than 50,000 in Iowa that do not have a lost. Iowa City being one and Pinkley being the other. These are the other communities, um, and you can see the revenue generation. Uh, you can see many of them have had it for a very long time, several decades, uh, with, uh, Des Moines, uh, being the most recent issue. So again, when you travel to Des Moines, you are paying sales tax, you're, you're paying that 7%. Uh, in Johnson County, there are several cities that have it. Um, and here's a, a list of, of those that do. Tiffin, Solon, Longtree, University Heights, Swisher Hills and West Branch voters have all approved, uh, a local option sales tax, leaving largely just the three largest cities, uh, that do not have a local option sales. So what the, what has the, um, uh, city council decided to, to do in terms of how to use these funds? This is what specifically will be considered by voters. Uh, the property tax relief is mandated by state law. The city council has no discretion on what property tax, uh, on property tax relief. Um, it has to be there, has to be 50%. So, um, uh, we'll get into what that means, but understand this was not a discretionary choice. Uh, the remaining 50% is affordable housing would be 25%. Park streets, uh, and public facilities would be 10% and community partnerships 15%. Again, I think, uh, just for round numbers, you can assume about a $10 million revenue, annual revenue, um, with local option sales tax. So, uh, that helps you kind of break down how, uh, funding would be allocated among
So, um, I say it since it doesn't have a sunset clause. Does that mean that if the city wants to change that allocation in the future, it has to go back on the ballot?
That's correct.
Okay.
And the voters can put it back on the, if the voters become upset with how the city's handling it or, uh, they want to repeal it, uh, they have that ability.
Did you define community partnerships?
Yeah, I'll touch on all of these really, really briefly here. So property tax relief is not a dollar per dollar, necessarily a dollar per dollar reduction in property tax, uh, in the rate. Uh, the city council will have the ability to reduce the rates with these dollars. So we can take lost dollars and basically not charge as much property taxes, uh, to, to our residents and businesses. Um, however, it can also lead to these, uh, this property tax avoidance. So if we would otherwise raise property taxes, we could use these dollars to, to, uh, uh, avoid doing that. And we just have to be very transparent in our budget process with how the 50% is, is allocated. Is it avoidance or is it repeal? And that'll be done annually by the city council. So that can change from here based on, uh, specifics. The affordable housing piece is pretty straightforward. 25% for affordable housing programs that are not specific projects. Again, this has been proposed without a sunset. So, um, councils 20, 30 years from now may be having to make decisions on what housing, uh, projects are, are most important at that time. But this is going to be a dedicated stream of revenue to address affordable housing. This can be done through direct city building. It can be done through grants in support of, uh, third-party organizations that are providing Park streets and public facilities. Uh, this would be 10% for this. And again, pretty straightforward. Um, this would be, uh, revenue to help supplement what we're doing to invest in our public facilities, uh, our parks and our, uh, our cities. And then the community partnership piece, and this is a 15%. Um, this recognizes that the, the, a lot of Iowa City runs on partnerships. Um, we have a lot of partnerships with social service agencies to deliver critical services to our residents. We have partnerships with arts and culture organizations that help contribute to the vibrancy of Iowa City. And those types of, uh, partnerships, uh, frankly have, um, struggled, uh, the city has struggled to keep up with the cost of providing those over the years. So if you look historically at how we're, uh, funding those organizations, um, in many years, we have to keep those, those funding streams flat. And this will enable us to, uh, pursue additional community partnerships or enhance the partnerships that we have, uh, without, uh, a reliance on, on sales tax. So 15% will, will go a long way to, to building, uh, those partnerships. There's a quick timeline. Uh, we're already, um, on our way to that November 4th election. Uh, the notice has been published. The county, uh, has the ballot language and, uh, the voters will decide on November 4th. If it's approved, the tax will not take effect until July 1 of 2026. I'm happy to try to go through anything that I'm able to skip over.
A small point, you, I think you said that, uh, the, uh, there's no taxes on motels and hotels. Is there a, is there a hotel and motel tax?
There is a separate tax.
Okay.
Yes.
I mean, since I never stayed in a place there, I don't know. What does it look like?
Uh, so we have to take those revenues and we have, uh, uh, by resolutions when the voters approve that, I think it was in the 90s, um, they have 50% of that, uh, has to go to, uh, tourism-related activities. And the way Iowa City tried to decide to do that at the time was a contribution to the Convention and Visitors Bureau, uh, known here as Think Iowa City. They get 25% of those hotel motel revenues and then 25%, 26% of this goes to, uh, parks and rec. The other 49% goes to public safety, specifically the post department.
So how might this affect the library's funding?
Well, one, I think it's going to be able to take pressure on property tax to be the, uh, the sole funder of a lot of our operations. So right now we rely on property tax, um, to, to fund about, uh, two-thirds of all of our operations. So by having, uh, these dollars come in, it's been a relief pressure on, on operations. So as we've been, uh, struggling to maintain status quo, whether that's in staffing, whether that's collections, um, this will give us some more flexibility to consider increases. Ultimately, those increases are decided by, uh, the city council. Uh, I think, um, probably, um, uh, even more so is, is thinking about long-term facility needs. Um, having the 10% dedicated to facilities provides us an extra billion dollars per year probably, uh, to invest back in public facilities. But also that property tax avoidance, that 50% or $5 million per year. Over time, the city council can consider whether to take those dollars and invest in a, a, a facility project here. So, um, I use a specific example. For five or six years, uh, of course, maybe even more, uh, the library has requested some dollars for place carpeting and furnishings here. And every year, uh, we, we tend to take those, those dollars. It's been somewhere in and out here, two or three years out. And that's been a story for some of the years if we've kept that out there. Well, part of that is we've got competing priorities that are, that are coming up. And, uh, we haven't been able to move a library one up, uh, to that funded here status. When we have an extra million dollars a year minimum coming in and potentially another five in that property tax avoidance piece, that's gonna allow us not only to move some of those projects forward at a faster pace, but it's also probably gonna allow us to more fully fund, um, projects, uh, and help us avoid some of the borrowing challenges that we have. And I don't want to get too deep unless you want to go there. But right now we have a constraint, uh, by state law that says, uh, an individual project. So if we wanted to do a remodeling here of the, of the library or a refreshing library, we can only borrow one, uh, per project. Um, anything else has to be covered cash. So particularly when you start thinking of larger scale projects, so if we can borrow 1.3, but that really only gives us 70 or 80% of what we wanted. And now we have another million in cash that we can layer on top of that borrowing. We're gonna be able to do, um, uh, more, uh, when it comes to those extra programs.
So are there any action items or suggestions on our side that come to think of?
No, uh, we, we are going to be in, uh, education mode. So, uh, you're gonna see, uh, information come out. And really that's our role as the city and that's what we're bound to do. We're bound to, to educate. Ultimately, the voters have to decide. And, uh, I'm sure we'll look for ways to, to work with the staff here to educate the folks that are going forward. There will be advocacy efforts out in the community. Um, but understand the city is not going to be a part of those advocacy efforts, especially if we've got, where that actually should. So if you do have the opportunity to, uh, share information with, uh, more circles, uh, or programs here, we'll participate in. Love to do that. Uh, we're gonna do a lot of these presentations over the next two or 10 months. So, uh, look, uh, welcome any, uh, advice or suggestions.
Comments? Thank you. Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Um, so the next item on our agenda, the discussion of executive. And I just want to keep over that. Reese and Anne has removed herself just because she's involved in the executive director position. She's a possible candidate. There is a working group. I want to explain where we are as a working group. And then I'm going to ask people for their opinions about countating the process. We have a working group that has been, um, overseeing the strategy for finding a new executive director. As you received in emails, we solicited applications. And the working group consists of, um, staff and trustees. But trustees have the major responsibility for hiring a new director. It's one of our primary reasons, because, um, the working group, uh, solicited for applications. We received maybe 16 applications, 15 on time, one that was past deadline. Um, it was about the size of the pool, maybe a little bit bigger than we were told we might get. Um, after we went through the applications, we, we decided as a group that there were two that were, as a, the trustees portion of working group decided there were two candidates that were viable for interviews that met the minimum qualifications, um, that we felt understood the position well, understood the culture of Iowa City and was what now, on Iowa City. And so I, I encourage the working group members to also add any comments. After doing interviews, uh, virtual interviews with the two candidates, there was consensus on a preferred candidate. And the question came up of whether we need to continue with the process. Um, when we have consensus and it would bring additional cost to the life growth. If we continue with the process, the original plan was that the candidates would be invited here. They would give a statement to the public. And their interest, they would meet with, um, staff. They would see the facility. Um, again, it would be a cost of bringing in the candidates and, and continue this process. And the working group chose to bring it back to the trustees to say, would we prefer to do an adjustment to the process? And move forward with a shorter, um, process, having done the one interviews. If we decide to do that, we would hold a special meeting to have a vote discussion of the candidate. Um, all meetings are open to the public. So you cannot have closed meetings. For that, we'd like to hear what thoughts the rest of the group have about this. Is there value in doing second interview to the same two people when it was consensus at, at the, um, meeting?
I think it's, yeah. Makes point of clarification. Uh, you were at consensus before even considering the cost of bringing
Oh, yes. Yes, yes. Um, yes. It was, it was before. So the cost considerations, one candidate was local, one candidate is external, would be bringing people in, bringing in the candidate and then treating both candidates fairly with meals.
So, um, you said that the process would involve having, uh, members of the public, uh, like the, the candidates meet with members of the public, but also that members of the public. Right. Um, that the discussion meeting would involve having
No, that we would have a survey tool that people could, um, staff and the public could give us comments. We'd have a very short period. Our recommendations have a lot of 48-hour period to give us feedback. And then, um, the candidates, the working group could discuss again and bring the candidates back to the full, uh, trustees panel. The trustees are responsible as a total for making that decision. The working group does not have the authority to hire. The entire board of trustees has that authority. So basically what happens, they, um, in order to minimize variability, we do not have a panel of people that maybe though we could consider that, but we have to look at the, the, the issues around that. Generally, what they've done for all the departments in the city is they'll allow each candidate to give a 10 to 15 minute statement. Um, and then they'll put different parts of the room for, for informal conversation.
Who is the working group? I've never known.
Well, it's yourself, it's Bonnie, it's myself, it's Angie and it's her. So we, we had discussed that when Tom pointed it.
I understand.
Okay. Okay. Um, we have to keep it under quorum, the trustees. So we had to watch our numbers and we had a lot of turnover with the board. So, so a lot of new people. And so we had a lot of people, we wanted, um, townwide members that were going to be continuing their terms. That's what I understand speaking for them, but that was my understanding.
If we forego the, um, other session with both candidates, but then the board didn't come to a consensus after the scheduled discussion, um, would that, in terms of, like, what the process, would that be going back to square one or with the?
Depends what the board wanted to do. It could go back to square one. It could be inviting both candidates in. The board has within legal constraints control the process. I mean, there's some things you have to look at. We did discuss this action with Iowa City Legal and they thought that we're, we're in the clear that this would be appropriate. Um, so we can go either way, but as long as we stay within state law structures, we have some flexibility. Okay. Do, I feel like I'm doubting, do we want to say anything?
Yeah, the working group have a strong preference for one or the other.
Yes. And consensus.
A consensus.
And I, all, all the working group members are here. So maybe they can answer, was there a strong preference while we were sitting in meetings? Do we either was
I, we don't, we don't have a say. Melanie and I, but
Well, they gave an opinion to the working
We gave an opinion.
They gave their opinion to the working group. So they don't have a vote because they're not trustees. They don't have legal responsibility. But they were included in the discussion and their opinion was so.
When are we gonna find out who these people are?
If we want to have a special committee meeting next week, we can do that and then have a discussion.
We can do it today?
We have an agenda.
I have to be on an agenda. We are discussing the process. So we could do that. We do not need to wait, um, four weeks. We can hold a special meeting with a day or two notice. And we can, we can do a full discussion of that.
Say, as of today, it's just deciding
So today we're asking, do you want to consider the truncated process that went forward?
Mm-hmm.
Um, would you like to veto that truncated process and say, no, go the full way and bring them in? Um, and if you and if, um, if you want to consider the truncated process, to arrange for a meeting for next week so we can get a posting to the board.
Okay.
Um, we are not allowed to have closed session and any human resource issues. So we'll just, the, the information will be presented at that time and it's open to everyone.
I'm curious, um, for folks maybe who participated last time in hiring or have participated in other, um, similar hirings, like in the city context, what, um, I mean, I can imagine the insides, of course, to, uh, the truncated process in terms of, uh, perceived, uh, ability of the public and other staff to, to participate. Um, but are there like specific experiences or, I don't know, thoughts, advice on that? I mean, there seems important, but I also understand the cost piece as well. So I'm curious.
And in the cost, like you were getting, I would, I'd just tighten the spot. I don't think we should make it only on cost, it should be on value.
Right.
Yeah. Um, we have two staff members here who were involved in the hiring of the last director and I was on the committee, we hired the last director. Um, but because it was a few years and values changed.
The other thing we might add, sorry to interrupt, but before you all came on board, uh, the city attorney came and gave a presentation to the library board regarding the changes in state law, um, that impact open meetings as it relates to hiring and the kinds of things that need to be laid out on each candidate publicly. So that probably changed things a little bit from previous
Very much so. The process was changing so we could no longer have closed discussions of candidates. Everything has to be Very much so, the process was changing so we can no longer have closed discussions of candidates, everything has to be. So I don't know if the staff members want to give, when last time you were on this, what you thought the closing comments would be.
Uh, we also did have internal candidates the last two times, so we were just aiming for, everybody that applied was new, uh, and unknown. And we had, I'm not in this committee, so I can't say, but we. We had probably. I can't remember exactly, but probably six to seven virtual interviews.
And that was at the semifinalist level, and then we had three at the finalist level.
That would have been a different pool, sound look, and then, um, pre-finalists were brought in from that. So, uh, the process was sort of well different.
But I wonder the value of that.
Well, I want to give, um. The value of it was that it gave a chance for everyone to be, like, you're sitting here and wondering, like, are these people? And, uh, due to, I'm like, that's people you can't, you can't.
If I could add, but again.
And Melanie's on this, this selection, she was on last one, she was on this group.
Um, to echo Jason's point, that was valuable because we didn't know the people. Um, and I have heard from staff that with this round, they're kind of pushing for speed and like a revolution to the issue.
So, uh, at the last one.
I want to go back one second and just answer my show. You asked what the value was when we did it, wait, first thing, um, we could have a committee structure at that point, so our ability to discuss things. Was significant, we had three candidates who responded to questions from the public. So we had predetermined questions that we could ask, and they were all standing at podiums, but. That structure is strongly discouraged, uh, because it creates, um. Advantages and disadvantages among the candidates, because they hear the questions and they feed off of each other. So what the city has suggested, and again, we have control of the process, is that instead they'd be allowed to make a statement. And then, as they've done, I guess, with a fire chief, um, perhaps with a police chief, give a statement and then allow social time. But you don't have the ability to keep going in depth with topics. So I, to me, the advantage and disadvantages, um, you have, you do have a community, they have a chance to meet the director. Um, they are allowed to give information, um, the weight of that information. Varies because they haven't seen the entire process, so they've never seen the interviews. And they have not seen the CVs, so they're giving you their thoughts, um, that public presentation. So here they'd be giving you their thoughts on the, the 10 minute statements they've made and then the social aspect. Do you see any other comments that you want to add?
Not really.
We did ask, in the past, we had them meet the city, um, department heads, um, the city was not exposed. I mean, they're glad to, but they have not suggested that we do that, so you had a question.
I, yeah, I just wondered, uh, did a lot of members of the public show up for this process last time?
Because we did not, yes, they did, because we had a legacy director that was retiring. And I even think, this is now subjective, that legacy director's identity, it was so entrenched with the, um. Library's identity, it was even hard to separate the two, and people come thinking, well, what's going to happen to that point? So I think they did, but again, it was a very different format. And it was three, um, external candidates, so everyone is going to be new. More questions, people? And should, would people like to have a meeting next week just to talk only about this process and to move forward the possibility of selection at that time? Um, there's a few options we could come, we could select at that time, we can decide to continue the process. Um, or we could decide to start the process again, however. Um, we should acknowledge that it will be an open meeting.
I've been on lots of search committees and overseeing lots of them, and almost always, the person who's chair of the search committee and members of the search committee. Reveal their preferences and why.
And that's what we would do next week, and again, this is the, we're not a committee, we're a working group, we are not allowed to have. A committee because we shave off, but we are working. So we do not have decision-making power, we will bring them forward and explain. I think all members, I haven't asked this yet, but I assume all members of the working group would want to attend and discuss that preference online. Again, you control the process as the trustees, so we're giving you our recommendation for you to take action. Do you want us to continue to invite people in for interviews, or would you like to have a meeting next week to discuss this? Well, actually, there'd be two topics, we also have to adjust the library director's job description. Because state law has changed and we have to adjust some of the description more.
I mean, if we want to invite more people, that would be dependent upon our judgment of the two people who are already.
And you could, there could be an outcome of next week.
It could be the outcome, it should be the outcome, actually, seems to be.
To, to invite the other.
To not, I mean, uh, I, I did, to not or, or to invite, but based on, I mean.
Based on the information, where is he tonight, not only for process, only for process? Do you want to have the meeting next week to discuss this, or would you like to not have and have us extend invitations immediately? To the candidates?
I, I think, I'd like to hear from the working group, if you think these two candidates are strong candidates. I can't see any particular value in extending it. Uh, if, if we see they're weak or one of them is weak, uh.
Well, we can't, uh, we are not on the agenda for selection of a director tonight. We're discussing the search, so we, we have to stay within the agenda, but there was consensus among the working group for one candidate.
So it sounds like what we want to do is have a meeting next week to decide if we want to just make a selection. Or extend an invitation or restart the process?
Yes. Unless someone comes up with a fourth option, yes.
Uh, yes.
No, it's to decide if they wanted to, if they have a choice to do a formal interview, not at that meeting, but to discuss the process and perhaps select a candidate at that time. Once they hear the arguments.
I want to hear from the, from the search committee or whatever we're calling it, and the people on it, and what their judgment is of, is that the people who have.
Right, and, and that's why we're not choosing the candidates tonight, we're only talking about that process.
So I think that's what the meeting next week would be, is hearing.
And then the decision on whether or not to include the public.
We cannot, we cannot.
Yeah, but that, I know, not excluded, but like, but whether the process, the full process, which we had intended originally.
Right.
Which invites public comment, would go forward or after we hear.
So the choice would be to make a selection then, to recommit to the original plan for the process, or to create a new process and start again? The next week will be.
We do have an invested community in our library, and so there is the optics of whether or not we get public comment on our team.
And we did discuss this, we did discuss this, and I think that was discussed before we came to consensus, that was your guys' discuss.
I think all of these conversations will be easier for you to process and make some sense.
Right.
Once you hear the working groups report about.
Once we can talk about the specifics.
And, you know, what the specifics are, that's kind of what you're saying, John, is I, I can't make a decision until I hear what you have to say.
Make any other decisions so we know.
Right, right, so would you consider having an extra special meeting next week? To have this topic of the executive director, um, selection and process next week?
Do you need a motion?
Yes.
I move that we have a meeting next week to have this discussion.
All those in favor? Hi, hi, um, others opposed? Thanks, this is a big issue, I just want to check with everyone, is this a good meeting time for next week? Because we need to get this posted, we can't, um. We can't burn time with the posting, we want to get it posted, and I would want to make sure that, to step on the wrong, your bra, so I go to a tactic at that time. So they can give their opinion.
What day are you talking about?
Well, it is currently Thursday, so it would be on the 4th, is that the Thursday?
Yeah.
Will that work for people?
I can make it work, but it's not ideal.
Can we, we have time to move it up?
Can you make it work, or do you want to adjust the time or?
That could make it work.
We have to have a quorum.
Yeah, we have to have a quorum.
Could we move it up to Tuesday, the 2nd? Or do we have to give a week to notice?
Note, it's a three day weekend, so.
Oh, we can't count those days.
I, I just want to be as, as open and compliant with the state laws as we can be.
Yep.
So if we're not going to do it on the Thursday, I think pushing up for this Tuesday kind of pushes it with a three day holiday.
Right. Well, I will do my best to make it work.
Okay.
Yeah, but yeah, it could make the fourth work.
Can you make it on the fourth?
I do, I'm a date, of course, I, I think I can, I'm pretty sure.
If not, maybe we can zoom in or, if not, maybe we can do a virtual connection just so people can follow the discussion. Okay, so Jen, what else do you need from us on there?
I'll just get agenda out.
So there will be two topics, one will be, if, if people are in agreement, the updating of the job description. Because should we decide to hire someone, it would be nice to have a current job description. And this just came up this week that we need to correct many job descriptions across the library. Um, well, why is it directed, and then the second is to move forward on hiring an executive director.
Can, can you change a job description in the middle of a search?
We don't, this is not something we chose to do, I mean. Can we change it? I suppose, well, we can do, we can get a legal opinion whether we can change a job. I don't think the majority of the content, the description, the major responsibilities will change. A lot of the, um, the mandate that's coming on us involves. Descriptions of tasks, including diversity, equity, and inclusion, that's no longer about by the state.
In which case, it would be a. Grammat- more grammatical than, um.
Yeah. It could be grammatical, it could be grammatical, and it could be just looking to make sure that we're complying with the state's laws on.
So we're editing out anything that we're.
We have not, honestly, I haven't even read the change yet, what, what, what we'll be doing, whether there's a way to clarify our meaning. Rather than editing out to make sure that we're being inclusive with the people. We need to make sure that we are being consistent with state law, our job descriptions. This is not something we asked for, this is something that we were told.
Who was driving this?
The state, the state, these are public, please, this is.
The people, somebody in the state government is.
The government has made this a mandate, we need to look at these job descriptions. But since we're bringing in new employees, this is just a moment to push this one through for review very quickly.
I mean, they want to get rid, I'm sorry, but they, they want to get rid of all the kinds of things that we are, we've become familiar with.
Well, I think we could, right.
Equity and, and fairness and, uh, uh, bringing in people of different capacities and so on. They want to get rid of all that.
Well, we can talk about the specifics when you look at the description, I'm not saying we're going to make any recommendations on editing. What we're going to do is looking at clarifying our meaning for this and to make sure it's still within our mission. So, I mean, we have to review the wording in this job description at some point, we can do it after we hire, or we can do it before we hire. And when you ask about legal questions, I think changing a job description before a hire makes more sense to me than the week after someone is hired.
Has the city attorney looked at this?
Yes.
And what is, I don't know that it's a he or a she, but what, what did the city attorney say about?
In terms of correcting, adjusting.
Of what our, our job description looks like?
Yes, we are.
Does it pass muster?
We are, no, we are working with the city attorney on the multiple library job descriptions that will have to be adjusted. So we've been told by the city we need to do this. So I think it might be easier to answer the questions when we have the job description in front of you and you look at what's being edited. And if we feel the meeting next week is going too long and we need to adjust that, we'll deal with it then. But right now, we're, we're talking in a very vague way, and it's easier when we have the specifics in front of us. If people don't mind us putting that on the agenda also, it would be too long. Agenda, we're not going to review all the job descriptions at that time, we just, we're hiring someone into a description that we're being told has to be.
Updated, to come into conformity with the state law.
To come into conformity with state law.
And what, 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 what parts of the state law has to have to be conforming with?
Issues relating to mandates on diversity, equity, and inclusion to meet the state end.
So we need to eliminate those.
I did not say that, I said, we're going to review that at that time, right, we could be clarifying what our intent is. But let's talk about it when we have in front of us that, and if you decide at that time that you want to make a motion not to touch this, we'll discuss that motion.
So we. I was just gonna say, Jen, would it be possible for you to send us a copy of the current job? Beforehand, just so we have a chance to look at it before the meeting? Thank you.
That's a good idea.
Thanks.
Um, suggested edits, I haven't had a chance to review yet, so I'm trying to talk about it anyway, but we'll have to make that job description available in any topic that we think of. This is just going to change in process due to some of the changes on state laws, because I know it doesn't feel like it's transparent as we like it to be. But it's what we're dealt right now.
Think it's worth saying that Robin has spent hours and hours and hours in multiple meetings with the city attorney's office. So it hasn't been easy to get even to this.
And we've met with the human resource office also multiple times, so we're sure that our process is reviewed and that we're not only doing the legal thing, we're doing the right thing and how they feel about.
It's just a sticky time right now.
But again, the process belongs to the trustees.
Well, let's see, I mean, feel good about it essentially adding. More optionality in our decision-making where we can still stay the same course.
I anticipate the city attorney may be here during that meeting, so that we make sure that we are being consistent with the laws. He's offered to be. Well, he knows we're going to invite him, because we haven't, we couldn't invite him, we didn't have a meeting time. So in concept, he's been in life. If he's not here, I think our human resource director will be.
Yeah, he's argument free too.
I cannot say enough positive things about how the city and the city has tried to assist us with this from the legal department. Being consistently available to us, to the human resource department, they're struggling with the same issues. That this is being put across all public.
When two forces sort of are coming at us at once, but one force is the old meetings law.
Yes.
Which still, I, as I understand, have to be, it might be reviewed by the Iowa Supreme Court. And then, um, and then also the DEI law that will to look back, so it's kind of two things that we have to work around now.
Right.
Work with.
We do, we would be careful about, I would say, we can work around them. Like that person wanting to get in one.
Our intent is to, um, be transparent and, um, to work with these mandates within our mission to the extent that we can. And I do want to say too, I appreciate that the staff has been patient, because this process went quiet for a little while while we figured out what our options are. And I know this is affecting their daily day work here. Um, so we do, we did take that into consideration, we truly are, um, just really looking at what our options passively are and how they're. Be responsible of our resources also. All right, I'm going to let Ann note that she's welcome to come back. We are on to the next item. We actually need. Um, the, the library board trustees annual report, each year where it has to summarize the things that are done. I think the timing is a little interesting, because it's always after the board turns over, however, I don't listen to you.
Uh, so last month, we presented a draft of your annual report to the city council, or to you for the city council. And we incorporated your comments and suggestions from last month. And so we included two versions, one is just showing the specific edits and the other is just. And so we included two versions. One is just showing the specific edits and the other is just reading off the grid for the.
Questions or comments, adjustments requested? I know that. Uh, oh no, we don't have a comment on that, corrections, so. These are mostly follow up from last week's, last month's meeting. So we need a vote for that. So we need a motion for approval. Jump on so we can make the person transcribe the meeting crazy. All right, um, we, we have a second, we have first second. Um, all those in favor?
I.
And the staff and. So let's move forward. We are up to, um, the election of a vice president. When, um. When Dan left the board, he had been serving, he'd been recently appointed for a month, um, as the board vice president. And so we need to put together a nominating committee, which is done by the, the chair to put together a nominating committee. And the nominating committee, um, has an officer to present to the board for, um, approval.
Yes, the nominating committee would like to, uh, recommend to you for your consideration that Joseph Mafa. Be appointed to the vice president position with a term ending, I believe it's June twenty twenty six. Is that correct?
Okay. Yes. We also can accept nominations from the board. So do we have a motion?
I move, we accept the nomination of.
Second?
A second.
All right, all those in favor? All right, no opposed. Okay, an abstention, I should have called that. Um, I appreciate you stepping up. This is valued because we definitely need a position. And I think with so many new board members, it's challenging when we have an office position. So I'm truly appreciative. Um, the procurement of the integrated library system.
Yes, so I'm very excited about this specific agenda item because we get a new computer system for the library. And we talked a little bit about it in the collection services report. We've had the same system for. Well, nineteen ninety nine essentially. I mean, it's changed a lot since then, but, um. So this is a big move for us and we went through a pretty rigorous system, rigorous, uh, process to look through different ILS. It's called an ILS, an integrated library system. And we would like to sign a contract with Bywater Solutions and implement the Koha system. With Aspen as our catalog. And the specific memo attached to this resolution was really drafted by the city's purchasing department. It really helped us through this whole process. So that's, some of the language in there is specifically lifted from the, um, purchasing policy with Brent and I signing off. And, um. I, we think that Koha will be a very flexible system for us. It has several features. Um, we can make significant changes to it. And they're well reviewed when it comes to customer service. So that's something that we're very interested in. Several peer libraries in Iowa use it, Des Moines, um, and Cedar Falls, Dubuque. So Carnegie Stout and then Dubuque County. And we are expecting to save fifty percent in ILS costs over the next five years.
It's pretty breaking.
Fifty percent?
Fifty percent. Um, so we're moving more to, uh, now, uh, we are on a proprietary pro, uh, program right now and we're moving to a open source program. That's managed by a company. So those are the savings we're doing. And just also just to say that moving to a new system is a huge undertaking. The staff's coming to do a lot of work. Uh, we're hoping to move over to this new system in the spring, so thinking March or April. There will be impacts on patrons too. And we'll, we'll talk you through, um, those impacts when we get a little bit more information from the front end.
Jen recommended a couple of clarifications on the handout draft of our, our. He's worked smooth a few things.
I would go all the way.
Oh, okay.
I've been persuaded that they.
The month of dollar savings.
That, uh, these things are awarded and not.
So Brent will, will Brent be the person who spearheading the rollout?
So I do have some questions about Koha. Um, I went to their website. They don't have a privacy policy. They don't have any security information on their site at all. Um, is this system going to have patron personally identifiable information in it?
Well, all, both, our system right now has personally identifiable information we have to attach. Patrons to specific items they have checked out so that we knew what they have and then it's erased. That's a library policy. So Koha can implement any privacy policies that we, um, would like them to.
Okay.
And then on the security, that was part of the review. And they had to provide information as part of the bidding process on their security practices.
Okay.
And that was actually a huge portion of the, um, the needs assessment that we had.
Okay. I appreciate your question.
Yeah, no, it's great.
Other questions, thoughts? Well, we will have to take action for this to go forward. So we need a motion. To authorize the procurement of the system. So move. Okay, all those in favor?
I agree.
I oppose, the abstentions. Okay, moving forward.
Really exciting.
Yeah.
Really.
How long until the system's completely?
Yeah, we.
What's the timeline?
So we think of implementation in the March and April portion and then we're off of. Then we'll have them running a little side by side just to make sure everything's okay. And then July, we are done with.
That's fast.
Um, Sierra entirely.
All right.
And I'll like. Be a time to be able to do new things and then rolling with the time of reading, which is probably really busy time. There we go. Kind of a rush time.
Moving on, ready. We're on the next item, which is the fourth quarter financials and statistics.
We don't need to sign this initial letter, do you think?
Too old by the folks. I'll have it in a minute.
Have it in a minute and then, um, and then I'll sign, you know.
But that's why we take the roll call so that we know everyone's vote.
You want to do your roll call one at a time?
Where was he now? Um, financials and statistics.
Yeah, I'm happy to answer any questions. We're in budgeting season for FY twenty seven, so I wanted to include some themes that I saw across our expenditures. Um, especially just the need to address, um, aging equipment and the building itself. Um, so when we're drafting that budget, those, um, those are put in there for the city.
I'll go back to your document, John. John has asked a question about.
Well, I had a question about scalability.
Okay.
I just want somebody to tell me what it is. I, I, uh. I, I don't know what it is. I, I'm, I, it's a word that.
That's on page nine.
That was back on nine. That was an integrated library system.
It means that it can be used by multiple size libraries. So small libraries can use. Koha, but then they, also larger systems like Cuyahoga, the entire state of Rhode Island is on Koha. Um, yeah, so it can be used for multiple.
Is that a technical term that?
Yeah.
Because I, I don't think I'd ever seen it before.
Sorry, when you said scalable, I was like, I don't.
So there's a question, he has a question here, uh, on the document, we have a miscellaneous computer hardware one. The people have the document, John. We third paragraph.
Yeah, that's, that's a, yeah, usage term that I.
Did you want us to pause to read the same thing about that comment?
Well, uh. Yeah, I. I did this some time ago, so I don't, it's not really the front of my mind. And what page are we on?
We're looking at, um, page twelve. You had a comment, we had two comments.
Yeah.
About page twelve.
Yeah, yeah. Okay. Well, I, I mean, my solo, my suggestion is, is on the sheet here. And if there was, I mean, I don't, does it require a, um, motion? I, I mean, we can.
Is this document only for internal use or does it go?
Well, other than, it is, I mean, the whole board packet is a public.
Right, right.
But we aren't, this, this is just, this was a memo for you.
It's just, I thought it was a little fuzzy and I, what I tried to do is to make it clear. If you agree, it makes it clear, fine, and we can go on. But, uh, if you don't, then. Come up with something better.
If we reuse the language for the budgeting process with the city, you can tighten up.
Right, which. So it's good to keep a record of this.
But when you're implementing your new ILS, are you thinking they've got a processing going to be reduced at that time? Or is this cost really just coming from NCLC that we're buying records, so to speak?
The OCLC is covered in that line. Um, what we were running into, why we overspent the data processing was an issue with Sierra.
Oh, so, so this new ILS could mitigate this overspending on this line in a ticket.
Does the formatting of this make sense to new members? Are there questions? Because sometimes you begin with a lot of, um, jargon and just templates that we're used to using. That may not be the funniest.
I thought it was, uh, clear and really helpful. Yeah, and if there's any time that you would like changes made to the packet, that's.
Do we need more time on this item or are we ready to move forward?
Come on, Jay, that is. When you submit the budget to the city for the last one year. Someone is coming out. We'll be looking at some of these over the year to inform your October.
Yeah.
Are you planning to adjust the, um, budget for the bookmobile then?
Yes, yeah. And that, and also just watching themes like one year, okay, but like per se multiple years, then adjustment has to be made. Especially if it's eating into other lines on the operating budget.
I appreciate the explanation. No other questions on the usage? I'm kind of surprised. Usually people like to see the statistics.
I will just say our collection use was up. Ninety, point nine nine percent, so not quite one percent. Um, but a couple of things, digital collections are really carrying. The weight of circulation, um. And it was pretty shocking to see that the adult's digital audiobook collection circled exactly this, or circulated or was used. The same amount as the adult nonfiction print. That is the first time that this has happened.
It might be of interest to new people at some point in the year, not tonight, to discuss the cost of this in some of these formats. And why it's not an equitable playing ground.
It's a scandal, actually. A scandal of, of the suppliers. I mean, they're gouging libraries.
Yeah, they, um, are about, I mean, now they're around. They're almost thirty percent of the use that we have, but they account for more than fifty percent of the, um, entire, uh, collection budget.
And just as a reminder, we have a requirement by the state to do continuing education for the board. And if there are other topics you'd like to hear about during the year, let us know. But I think a short session. On just what the publishers are doing might be valuable.
Very believable, um, for putting their whole thing that there is some. I feel like there's current laws against publishers about the individual costs too, so. I don't know if that would be part of it, like a little tiny. Maybe Sam can inform a little bit on that, but.
Doing her best.
If you would put your piece down about that and whatever we talk about, I would love to hear. I, I know about it, but it's on back burner and I'm not up to date on where about they are. Oh, interesting.
There's a couple of states who have passed laws to, uh. Kind of level out the costs of those, but they've been overturned by courts because it's federal copyright law that needs to make.
Uh, okay.
Do we move on? Any other questions? I don't want to rush anyone. I just want to respect your time. We have the interim directors report.
Yeah, I have, um, a couple of updates. One, I just wanted to mention Iowa Public Information Board training, um, about open meetings and open record laws. Um, I attended the Tuesday evening session and it provided really good information. Uh, but I did get, um, idea of why the whole signup process was a little difficult. Um. It's a staff of two. Have been given this mandate, um, and they are provided that.
For the state.
For the state.
For everyone.
Um, and they've been provided the Eventbrite software. And at the level of funding that the state has provided to provide the training, um, they only allow a hundred and twenty five people to take the training at any time. Um, and so, uh, there are two other, um. Nonprofit organizations, the League of Cities, and then another group that are working to become providers of this training. I'm hoping the state library will do so too. And, um. Right now, it's not a requirement for anybody who's seated to take the training, although I do recommend it because the penalties of. Of violating the open records or open meeting law is pretty significant. Um, but the new board member will have to take it within ninety days. I will continue to send, um, openings for those, that training. It opened just, I think today, to October dates. So I'll send those along, um. And if you need assistance signing up and you'll see what other organizations are allowed to do it.
For clarification, you say new board members as a part of that.
July first.
So, so everyone here. Everyone here does not require to, but is strongly encouraged. To look at that because it also helps you correct your own behavior in terms of communicating. I mean, you worry, wonder. Why the working groups don't notice and you're not allowed to communicate back. It's, this is the law that structures that communication. We are and are not allowed to.
Bunch of time for that meeting, by the way, this train.
Ninety minutes.
He came on at first and said like forty minutes. It would be about a forty minute. Two hours later, I'm still sitting there.
Yes, it started late and.
Yeah, it's a ninety minute session, so. But it is a lot of.
Got through the training in about ninety minutes, but yeah, once they got.
And also the, maybe we hit the system is that the slides from that meeting are available on their website. So for people who cannot attend, um, it's a chance to see what the laws are. And if you have questions. You can definitely find answers for them.
It has to be a synchronous meeting, right? You have to tune in to a live stream.
And you have to identify who you are looking at. You must provide the name.
Gotcha. That's a consideration.
And after, another update that I, um, that just kind of came into fruition in the last couple of days is we're conducting a building study. Uh, in the first few months, Ellsworth engaged Enberg Anderson to conduct a study of the space. And determine if we're adequately using the space to meet current needs, but also future needs. And, uh, Enberg Anderson's the original architect who built the building. They've done some of our renovations. And they've so far worked with a coordinator team to kind of get an idea of what we're thinking of, what needs that we've identified. And now they would like to talk to the public and they're thinking of doing a public session on Monday, September twenty ninth. We, I just talked to the. Architect today. They'll send that information once it's finalized and give you an idea of what they're thinking. It's just. A brainstorming session, like, would you like to see this or, um. Or um have like different things that they can kind of actually move around. Um but once I get a little more information about what they're really thinking, I'll send that along to you. There will be opportunities for the architect to talk to you after that, too. They'll get presentations on what the public said and what they're hearing from staff. And then they'll want your input as well. And my last update is about the state historical library of Iowa. Just to mention that on Saturday, we had a citizens group book a meeting room here uh to talk about that building. Three hundred and fifty people came.
Wow.
And so it's undermined the community. I'm happy to answer any questions about what else is in the report, too.
Uh I was curious, you mentioned um on the State Historical Society that there's a lot of Iowa City specific stuff there. Is that stuff that we can take on if it's not going to be part of the D M Y collection? That's.
This is a longer discussion that we're going to have. Um, we are not, our mission is not to archive these documents, so we had, and also there are resources needed to do that successfully, and we are perhaps not resource to do that. But it's my department, it is something we might want to discuss in the future, uh what our role would be. So we'll look back in another few minutes, so maybe. We want to look at the others, we'll look on that.
To give some context for that, that library, it was started in eighteen fifty seven and ours was started in eighteen ninety seven. So they have forty years of history on this library and we've never seen ourselves provide an archival or a local history collection in that sense because we didn't want to duplicate services already in the community, means like even in our founding documents. So it's very, I know a lot of libraries have their kind of local history rooms. We just never had to have one and now we're in a.
It would involve an adjustment of our mission.
Okay.
The university also already has a mission of archiving, so I don't know if they have that, we should just give us packing receivers. But it's a consideration to they, they have a women's archive, university archive, they have a free archive, so I mean, in a small way. So we wouldn't have to be the only player.
Right, yes.
So we just, it's a longer, like, it is a big, it's a big picture.
There's also a county historical society that archives. But I'm glad it's on the forefront of life.
Yeah.
Anything else on the interim director's report? Right, the 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 departmental reports. Sometimes this is the. We go through them one by one? Do you have questions for them? Did they make? Feel good like to be here.
The freshmen bubbles.
Students program. Our collection services. This is your chance. And and if you're new and don't know everyone, it's why the staff is here most of the time, so they can respond to any questions about the. And the content exercise. My only question was um the report that, and I have retired a new person to drive the bus, let's go, the more the. The bookmobile.
It was from Dan's report.
Yeah, Larry. There, I didn't know the part Dan, that's what I was thinking, probably Larry's, but um and it said work on that, I didn't know if he was going to be one to drive. Larry's gonna be a driver. Larry has a unique job description.
What do we call, alicorn of. Be a forest, a unicorn and a pegasus. Cause it's all fine until it's grown.
That is quite a job description, I know. In other words, we have to make sure Larry stays with us. Um I T, anything, questions for us, anyone have any questions, comments? Does that format work for people? We we do different departments of each each meeting. Um, we are next up to the department reports, the development report. We don't have, we don't have a development person tonight. But Andy, we have anything? We have the report, questions, comments?
All right, John, any questions?
Yep. Right. So we keep moving forward. Okay, um. Going to the part here, we have the presence report. And I have a couple of quick things I just want to say first. Um we need to appoint two people each year to the Friends Committee, the Friends Board. And again, it's our foundation board that helps raise funds. It is under the umbrella of the library, so it is not a separate, not privately part of us. Um Joseph and Batty have agreed to take it on this year. And we encourage people to, after the reports, and consider doing it next year. It's a great big get to know the institution. But we didn't feel it was particularly fair to direct the people and say, hey, go for it. So Joseph has been on before and agreed to step back into it. So they're appointed. Couple other quick things on my report. I wanted to follow up with our, explaining our advocacy working group. So in the past, we had um library trustees that were particularly interested in larger library issues and um coordinating advocacy efforts on behalf of the library. Some of the statements in the past have been on intellectual freedom, according to Claire, because. Um on intellectual freedom, on access to libraries, these were statements that were drafted and brought back to trustees for endorsement or approval. Um perhaps this is a time we might want to consider putting a working group together again. The working group, or the the advocacy group had generally worked during the legislative seasons when there are particularly threats of libraries. However, um the State Historical Society will be a challenge because there are documents that we might perceive as falling under our mission. And there has not been identified consortium of groups that are meeting to discuss what will happen. If I understand correctly, the state is committed to forty four percent of the contents of that building. We don't know what forty four percent, and we don't know if they'll be made available to the public for research or for use. So that leaves a mysterious fifty six percent that may need to find homes. And I don't know if there's one entity stepping up to do this. It doesn't seem to be identified. If the advocacy group would be interested in deciding what our role might be with this and working with the direct, the interim director on how we go forward. Um I think there is some timeliness aspect to this because the building closes.
December thirty first.
December thirty first. So if there is interest and people would like to work on our work group, keep looking, you just.
No.
If people would like to get together, we do not want to have a forum with people in a working group. However, if this is a topic that would be of interest to you, to me, come back and advise the board on. I would welcome people volunteering to do this. I don't know if you'd be interested, but what's going to happen to the State Historical Society? In Iowa, so.
I'm interested.
Almost twenty one percent.
I'm interested.
Oh, good, good, good.
Apparently, the the plans that this state has are totally bogus, I think. I mean, they, 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 they have, they're talking about moving it to some uh uh repository. That's not, you know, just.
In in Des Moines.
In Des Moines, but not in the, not with the other materials. And I mean, I don't think they know what the hell they're doing, frankly. I I've knew, I that they, they really haven't got a sense of what, what they've taken on here.
Or do they?
Well, I don't know.
I mean, but meanwhile, we have the materials there and do we want to participate in any way with it? And the products could vary. It could be a statement, it could be a request of the board to reconsider our mission and get involved in this. It could be pulling together a consortium of organizations to ask, to be, that's, we don't even know if the state is interested in having conversations with any of us.
And the state library just appointed their interim as a permanent, right?
Permanent director.
Permanent director, so we do actually have a permanent director at the state library.
Which we didn't have, which we didn't have before, when all of us moved quickly. Do you want to comment?
I was gonna say, I think it's the state archivist. Um so there's two separate offices, but they're both under the Department of Administration.
I I do want to remind you that the working group together to think about the resources needed with any recommendations in terms of space, environmental conditions, staffing, like, so we we, we want to make sure we're realistic to about what we can do. Um, did you also see your volunteer, or you?
Okay, I noticed it, but also.
It's somewhere else, like, I'm committing.
Is this something you want to take on?
Yeah. Yeah, we're gonna leave to know.
No, I I think if anyone who knows that is trained is interested.
Well, I went to the meeting, I I went to that meeting on Saturday. It was, it was very well done and it was um there was a lot of bitterness about what is, what is going on and a lot of anger about how slap dashed uh the whole notion seems. Uh, I mean, it seems sort of like somebody got, we should have moved that historical group someplace else. You know, that was the, I mean, nobody's done any thinking, none and nobody that's involved is thinking very, very clearly about it. People who oppose it are clearly clearly about it, but.
Well, and maybe one action step for the working group to consider is having someone educate us very quickly.
I was just thinking one action step can also be reaching out to other organizations that might have some small, like, we have a small invested interest. Now in a portion, I don't, maybe we can reach out to Lucy Santos Green, who was here for a minute on the board and wasn't able to stay. But she's the head of the School of Library Information Science. She might know someone, not show me, because they have an archive. I mean, you can take, learn to be archivist through their programs. So that would be a connection, uh maybe someone there. I used to know who it was, but she retired a few years ago, so I'm out of the loop. Um but who else is interested? The old Capitol Museum? I mean, this is related to the building of our Capitol, so and our first Capitol here, so maybe finding out who else is invested in this. Maybe it isn't a plan, I mean, it isn't a group, but it could be a small group, like taking pieces. And building our own collections in our own ways.
That seems that we don't have an inventory of the question, what's even open. So there's, there's unknown part of this.
Right.
So. Would you like, would the three of you like to call together? Would you like Ann to organize getting together at one point? Just reach out to them.
Um, I mean, we can organize it, but I would love to, given that you and John and Jason did the tour a couple of weeks ago. I would love to, or get more information, um, so.
John, what was the outcome of the meeting that you attended? What, what are the next steps?
Oh, there's a petition drive, you might imagine, and I think they're, they're looking for five thousand signatures. And I think they're coming together. I mean, they're, they've been very aggressive about it. I think anybody knows exactly where you go to, 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 uh, you know, to uh intrude yourself into this. And partly because it's so amorphous, it's just, you know, well, we're gonna move them out, we're gonna come to Des Moines, we're gonna nobody's even given a very, no persons of importance, of, that is to say, political persons. And given a very clear explanation of why this is being done. So it it's very difficult to, it's like trying to get your hands with, you know, something that's really water.
John, was there one resource there that you think the working group should reach out to? One person, was there one resource or person that you identified that they might want to know about or reach out to?
Well. Uh. It was kind of spearheaded by, what's her name? A woman who was the.
Mary Bennett.
Sorry.
Mary Bennett?
Yeah, Mary Bennett. Uh, I mean, Mary Bennett is, was the person who, I think, did a lot to organize this particular event. Uh and and she was sort of behind it all and lined people up, I think, to to do it. Um, but as far as I know, there's not a, an independent organization that's.
Yep.
That, you know, uh, um being, I, uh, de- that dedicated itself to, to directing the uh uh opposition to.
I think they're all waiting for someone else to step up.
I guess, yeah. I guess.
And I think as the day of closure, we get closer to that, people will start asking individual organizations, including this one. Um, and it's, so I think it's good to start thinking about that now.
All right. Announcements from members, um first with the foundation updates. With the foundation meet, the Friends meeting, um advocacy update with an active group, but it's going to be again. Um, general announcements from members? Okay, um, we have news articles in the communications. And the city very graciously declared this library card month.
Yeah.
Did they have a proclamation? Did you initiate it or did they initiate that? The jam initiated it. Thank you. I didn't, I didn't know where it came from, so I'm thinking, where, where did they come from? But someone had to like write the proclamation in and go for it. So, um, any comments on the communications? All right, um, we need to approve minutes of the July twenty fourth regular meeting.
You further approval.
Second. All those in favor?
Hi.
Okay, um, approved minutes of the August fifth nominating committee meeting, can you, did you have a specific minutes? Someone was recording it.
Jason.
That we first recorded. Oh, Jason had minutes.
Yes.
Pardon? We don't have them in writing before, so it's a one sentence.
Yep. Yeah, it's in here.
Okay, oh, we need a motion to approve those minutes.
I move, we approve those minutes.
All those in favor? Oh, wait, wait, so we need a second, we need a second.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
I.
Great, uh, this is your merits, consensus, okay. Um, approve the disbursements. So you receive the disbursements, these are for fiscal year twenty five, period thirteen.
Any lingering voices from April twenty five that are, you know, given till August to finish everything up.
Oh, we can do both of these in one motion if you'd like, once they're done, the whole consent agenda, and then what we've done the first two separately.
Yeah, and you can do the whole.
Well, we've got the last two left with C and D. Do we have a motion to approve the disbursements? All right, we have a motion. We have a psych, I have an option here. All those in favor?
I.
Oppose. All right, so, uh, we have an agenda order for the September meeting. If there's anything, this is on page three. Um, we may be looking at the length of the meeting and putting the bylaws discussion to a little, to the following month.
Yeah, I think we'll be by last October.
Um, just because, again, we are making some adjustments with consideration to changes on the state level that we need to do. So this is now only affecting job descriptions I mentioned earlier. This is also affecting our bylaws and how we'll have to adjust those. Did you want to do the intellectual freedom in September or October?
We do it in September.
Okay, we'll do that in September. All right. So we have the um agenda, unless people have things they want to add in, but I do want to remind everyone, we will meet um one week from today at the same time for a two item agenda. The discussion of the hiring of the executive director and the discussion of revisions to the executive director's job description. And that, we need to get that posted as quickly as we can, so the public is aware. Do we have a motion to adjourn? We don't, I always just have, I mean, I have a motion for adjournment, I can just. We are adjourned. We are adjourned.